10-882-8500, Eastern Bridge Road. Parcel number PET 1800006A. West Ride Cottage Industries, John Stouts, Captain.
Joel, I was wondering if, is there any way I can move that podium a little bit? Because I have a lot of things and I am a little tight on space over there. Could I be moved over a little bit?
Uh, well, is, is he in the camera view over there?
You are not in the camera view.
Yeah, I need to go over there somewhere.
He's got behind.
I might have to.
Okay.
He stops just after.
Does that easel have a ledge on the bottom of it you can step on?
It's small.
Have the commission received any letters? I ask that people send for letters and...
I have two.
Alright, um, do I, can I read them on record? Or does somebody from the board read them on record?
I was just gonna bring up that I had two letters in favor of. If you want to read them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll read them on the record. Definitely, we'll start out with that. Alright, can I read some?
Yes.
Alright, I'd like to read these letters on the record. Uh, this one here is from Mike and Barbara Larson. N9194, East Shore Road, East Shore, Wisconsin. Towne East Troy Planning Commission, uh, on 9233th Floe Road. Dear members of the planning commission, I'm writing to express my strong support for the rezoning conditionally used permit for parking for Fred's Tap. This project represents a valuable addition to our community. Particularly given that it's near location, Lake Dula. I believe there are several compelling benefits that this development will bring to East Troy. One, enhance a local economy, a stable establishment of another commercial restaurant. Streaming economic activity in the area will create jobs both directly in the restaurant and then indirectly through the increased demand for local suppliers and services. Community gathering space, Fred's Tap will serve as a vital venue for public gatherings. As a new dining option, it will provide residents and visitors of the place to socialize and build community ties. This is particularly important in fostering a series of community spirit and togetherness. Three, tourism boost. Lake Dula is a significant attraction for both residents and tourists. The addition of quality dining establishments will enhance the experience for visitors, making the area even more appealing as a destination. This can lead to increased tourism, which benefits both businesses and the broader economy. Four, convenience and accessibility. With the approval of the rezoning conditionally used permit for parking for Fred's Tap, we'll be able to accommodate more patients comfortably. This will elevate potential parking issue, alleviate potential parking issues, and make it easier for customers to visit, enhancing their overall experience and encouraging repeat visits. Five, community development. The project aligns with the broader goals of developing our community in a way that is both sustainable and beneficial for all. Supporting this initiative demonstrates a commitment to growth and improvement, ensuring East Troy continues to thrive and offer amenities that residents and visitors alike can enjoy. I strongly encourage the planning commission to approve the rezoning conditionally used permit for parking for Fred's Tap. This development promises significant advantages for our community, and I am confident it will be positive additions to the East Troy. Thank you for considering my perspective on this matter. I look forward to the commission's favorable decision. Sincerely, Mike and Barbara Larson. Alright, I received another, there's another one here. Um, attention Joel Cook. Dear Joel, we are the neighbors on New Deal Avenue and are unable to attend the June 5th meeting pertaining to the request of John Stouts rezoning of commercial and conditional use of the parking lot across the street from Fred's Tap. We are in support of his, his request. Thank you, Laura Haynes, Mike Puchek, uh, to West 2389 New Deal Avenue, East Troy. Okay, why do I apply for a rezon along with the conditional use permit? To get Fred's Tap fully open, to provide a additional location on Lake Dula to go for a beer and something to eat by boat or car. Currently, there's only one other choice on Lake Dula. At one point, there were seven bar restaurants on Lake Dula. Okay, I would like to address the changes for the property to the neighbors. There will be eight commercial parking spots available for the bar and/or commercial use. I will be removing any excessive personal vehicles along with some of my other related re-use equipments. I am not adding any additional boats or piers. I'm gonna repeat that. I am not adding any additional boats or piers to the property known as North AB 28, Eastern Bridge Road. Currently, I have 10 boats there. Please see letter dated February 28, 2012, from town attorney Jim Mills, explaining it is legal to have 10 boats on the property known as North AB 28, Eastern Bridge Road. With the proposed zoning change to C2, I am applying for a permitted use in C2 for conditional use of Yachting Club and Arena. In the conditional use request, I am requesting eight commercial use slips along with two personal use slips, not to exceed 10 slips as we currently have now. I would like to address requests of the planning commission. Look at your packet. I included my application to Walworth County. I met with our zoning officer Darren Schwanke and K Casey, the lead planner of Walworth County. I received K Casey's initials on my application. Please see your packet. In your packet, I included a copy of the Walworth County zoning book, this, uh, C2 under 74-179, definitions along with, uh, use, conditional use of Yachting Club and Arenas. Under section 74-221, existing substandard lots. Please see your packet. I gave six examples of lots in the town of East Troy that are in C2 zoning currently with less than five acres. I also included an example of a C2 zoning property with a lot size of .31 acres, which is having to be smaller than my property that I'm trying to get into C2. Uh, if you are creating a new lot or a larger lot, you need to have a minimum of five acres. However, to have a lot of record, that was recorded prior to the adoption of the current zoning code. And I spoke to our zoning officer Darren Schwanke, and the code was adopted on 7/14/1975. So July 14, 1975, is the date that Walworth County started taking over the zoning in the town of East Troy. Okay, um, the zoning, as long as the lot of record was recorded prior to the current code being adopted, um, I provided six examples that are currently in C2 zoning with less than the current code that's made to be a minimum of five acres. I spoke to Darren Schwanke, our Walworth County zoning officer. I asked Darren when was the current zoning code adopted? He instructed me that on July 14, 1975. The current zoning code was adopted in any parcel that was a lot of record, recorded prior to July 14, 1975, is a substandard not conforming lot. I have given in, I have given in your packets, six examples of C2 zoning properties in the town of East Troy with lot sizes as small as .31 acres, which is smaller than my half-acre lot. By approving this rezon from C4 to C2, you will not be creating the only lot in the town of East Troy that is C2 zoning with less than five acres. I would like to address some of the environmental concerns this proposal we bring up. Starting with the parking. So I did is I went around all the other B3 zoning properties on the lake, and I took a measurement with the Franco tape measure, and I started at Double D's property. Uh, first we'll start at the proposed site. Um, it is from here, that's the ordinary head watermark, to here, the first stall. It's 154 feet. So at the proposed location, the first parking stall is gonna be 154 feet. There will be nobody parking right here. That's inside the gated area. No one's gonna come down there. All the parking is gonna be in gravel, banned back here, which is 154 feet to the ordinary head watermark. Okay, then I went over to Double D's, um, which I don't have drawn out here, but it's 79 feet from the closest parking stall to the ordinary head watermark. Then I went to Linnies, which I have, which is right here, and it's 50 feet from the ordinary head watermark to the first parking stall at Linnies. Then I went to the Dockside property, and it's 49 feet from the ordinary head watermark to the first parking stall at Dockside, and it's seven feet to the back from where the channel is back there to the parking stall closest to the channel. Then I went to the Lake Dula Lot Club, which is right here, and the Lake Dula Lot Club is 57 feet from the ordinary head watermark to the parking stall, and if you go to the channel to the closest parking stall, it's 27 feet. So I'm just showing that what we're proposing here is we're not gonna try to put cars closer than the area already on the lake. We're using 154 feet back, which I think will be adequate to not have to worry about anything getting into the lake, um, over 154 feet. Okay, um... Alright, I'd like to explain... I'd like to explain this, which is... Okay, what I'm showing you here on the, alright, so, is these are the sensitive areas on Lake Dula. There are eight sensitive areas on Lake Dula here. And I'm gonna start up at number one, and I'm gonna work my way to number eight. So number one sensitive area, it's right over here. Number one, you have one pier, three boats, in sensitive area number one. In sensitive area number two, you have eight piers, that's over here, you have eight piers, 11 boats, in sensitive area number two. Alright, in sensitive area number three, which is, uh... Right within the corner here, at sensitive area number three, you have five piers and you have four boats up here in sensitive area number three. Alright, sensitive area number four is right here, and you have, um, eight piers and eight boats. Okay, now, sensitive area number five, if you look on this picture, right, uh... Here, this is sensitive area number six here, okay? Uh, this is Canaan Palace Chasers, and right now, there's 20, um, 24 boats, 12 piers, two buildings right on the edge of shore, and a boat launch. So that's in sensitive area number six here. So, um, I'd like you to think about how these sensitive areas impact the lake in a relationship to what I'm asking you to do, because I'm asking for a fraction of what these people already have, so I'm not asking them.
But didn't you say you're not asking for any more boats or any more...
No, no, I'm not asking for anything additional. I'm just asking for the type of my boats, so you can pull up my pier and walk across the street and have yourself a beer, a burger, or something like that. Right now, I can have 10 boats, not a question, not a problem, but I can't use the boats in a commercial capacity. I can't let you pull up and go have a beer over there. That's where I, above this. That's why I need to have a conditional use to have a lot for Marina, so that you can pull up and enjoy. And another thing, all the properties that I mentioned earlier that were B3 on the lake, um, they're at a competitive advantage with Fred's Tap. And recently, we have a culvert there that probably only about a third of all boats on the lake will fit through there. We're, we're handicapped or hindered a little bit by the size and the culvert to go through there. So if you go to Double D's when it was around, you could pull anything you want. If you go to the Linnies, you could pull up anything you want. If you go to Dockside, pull up any side boat you want, and etc. at the Dockside. So we're at a competitive disadvantage by having you go through the culvert to patronize the, the business. Okay, um, sensitive area number seven, okay? That is the area where this proposal is, and sensitive area number seven is, uh, right down here, this sensitive area here, on that, that map there. Um, sensitive area number seven has, it feeds the homes that are behind Fred's Tap. There's 29 houses behind a New Deal Avenue, and each house has between two and three or four boats on it. I don't know very many that could just have one boat, but maybe there's a few. So there's probably 40 to 50 boats conservatively that come through the culvert and come out through this channel here and go onto the lake. Now, I'll tell you something about sensitive area number seven. The channel area right here and right here, it's about three to four feet in depth, water depth, which you can traverse in and out and not have a problem. You're not whipping anything up, you're not damaging anything. However, if you take your boat and go over here, where the little pets are, or over here, where the little pets are, or out here where the little pets are, it's 12 to 16 inches of water. So most of the boats that are on Lake Dula are water-cooled engines. You either have an outboard or an inboard outboard. There's a few blood motors running around, but very, very few of them. So if you have a outboard or an inboard outboard, and you decide, hey, let's go drive it to the sensitive area, about three or four minutes, your motor's gonna overheat, you're gonna turn your boat and scrap aluminum or whatever you got.
Oh, it's a good old customer to the week.
Well, I'm pointing out that the boats that come back from New Deal and the boats that end up on the lake aren't damaging environmental sensitive area. Because if you were to go in here where it's shallow, you're gonna damage your boat, plus you'll damage the sensitive area. So the vast majority of the people that come through that area, including myself, always stay in the channel. So I'm just trying to point out that sensitive area number seven is very important to the lake. It's a filter, it's a buffer, uh, we have no, uh, no foil down there, and that's why we wanna keep it. But what I'm saying is, the people that are using that channel to either get back to New Deal or to come by me or wherever, they're not gonna be damaging the area in sensitive area number seven, because they don't go in the shallow area. They're gonna damage the boat, no one's gonna do that. Okay, so I'm gonna go over to sensitive area number eight, which is, uh, this picture, right here, uh, yeah, right here, sensitive area number eight. So sensitive area number eight is going to be right over here, and that is our public boat launch. So currently, our town of East Troy Public Boat Launch, which is in our own and the town runs, um, they put roughly 6,000 boats a summer through that launch, okay? It generates between $50,000 and $60,000 per year for the town, for revenue for the town. So, you know, sensitive area number eight is probably the one that's hammered the hardest out of all the sensitive areas, because all the boats coming in, you know, is sensitive area number eight. So I'm just trying to point this out, that me asking to have 10 boats there is really a micropossum of what's really going on everywhere else in this other sensitive areas. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Let me just throw some ideas. Sure. You already have 10 boats?
Yes.
You'll continue to have 10 boats?
I'm not gonna expand any boats, I'm not gonna expand any...
But if I, but if I'm a guest and I come over there, there's still gonna be 10 boats in need, so that'll be 11?
No, no, I'm gonna take some of the boats that are there, I'm gonna get them out of there, and I'm gonna have, so if you come by boat to visit, to patronize them...
And Fred's Tap has three slots or two slots?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do similar to what, uh, Mr. Tujusian does down there, leave a couple of those spots out on the, on the pier, so you can come in and grab whatever you want and go over the lake. I'm trying to make it accessible by the water, so... I also have a, uh, a ecological report here that I had done, um, by this company called Applied Ecological Services, and in here, he goes into great detail, explains that the percentage of my area, uh... was less than two-thirds of 1% of environmental seven sensitive area. So I'm not even at 1%, I'm two-thirds of 1%. So I'm not gonna create a large impact on sensitive area number seven, providing a stable lily patch, which I think they will. Alright.
Uh, I don't think we have a copy of the ecological report like that.
Uh, I did not want them off, it's like eight pages, we want a book out of the board to have you let you look at it, or I can make someone drop that off or if you want, I'll go out and fill it in. Yeah, I'll take them off. Alright, um... Alright, another thing I'd like to point out here is this picture right here, okay? And this picture is right here, alright? This is the very front of Linnies, over on East Shore Road. And in 2006, there was a sewer, stormwater sewer installed there, and the stormwater sewer was installed by the town, and the gentleman that signed off on it right here was town chairman, uh, New Deal, because we sit right over here, and this was done with no permits. There's no county permits for this, there's no...
What does this have to do with...
Well, I'm just showing as far as the use either of having one offload into the lake or my parking, I'm just trying to point out that my parking is the least detrimental thing going on in the lake, that's all.
Take your point to the...
Okay, alright, yeah, alright. Alright. No one owns the lake, but there are entities that wanna control who uses the Lake Dula. This is contrary to the public water trust doctrine. Please keep this in mind when deciding how you'll vote on this proposal. I understand some commissioners on the planning commission may have some objection to this proposal. Ask yourself, your objections, how do they apply to the other seven sensitive areas we discussed on Lake Dula? I've been involved with the lake, with businesses on Lake Dula since 1968, when I was born. My grandparents used to own Dockside Building, and I was an ancient slave servant for the first 20 years of my life working at Dockside. So with over 50 years of human services on Lake Dula, serving people who enjoy Lake Dula, I spent 20 years at the current Dockside, formerly Stinex Place, 10 years at the former Linnies property, and 21 years at the Fred's Tap property. I would like to state for the record that I had personally rented at the Dockside and the Fred's Tap location for boats for over 40 years, pulling thousands of boats. I can state to you, no one I ever rented a boat to has received a ticket from the town of East Troy Police Department or Wisconsin DNR. So if I send somebody out on the lake to rent a boat, go fishing with your family, your grandparent, whoever, I agree with them, I tell them about the lake, I tell them what you can do, I tell you what you shouldn't do, and I tell them to do this, or you're gonna get popped by the cops, and they gotta do what I do. So I, I drill them down and make sure that no one gets a ticket. I don't wanna have someone come up Lake Dula and have a bad experience. Alright, in closing, it's a win-win for the community. It's a win with a public meeting place to socialize with neighbors. The building and surrounding land will be cleaned up, for meetings to win, you get the bar fully open, and I would like to have the opportunity to address any questions and concerns while I'm done talking to you guys, have any, or if the, uh, if I'm done, thank you.
Alright, questions, uh, for the applicant on this question, so, if you have any, sir? Um, what's different than the last time we shot it up?
Um, what's different, I think, that I didn't have my thoughts in a row with the five acres and the C, the C2. Um, I wasn't aware, and I, I learned this from talking to Darren at the county, that if you have a property of record, that you can put it in the C2, and you can get a conditional use for Yachting Clubs and Arena in the C2. I wasn't aware of that at the time that I came through last time, that you can do that, so...
So me personally, and not speaking for anybody else, the problem I have is the C4.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's a weapon.
Correct.
We don't change the origin anyways right now.
Well, the property has been delineated twice, and it's been proven that there's only a couple inches long and short, like most lake lots. So a property is an upland zone district, it's not a wetland property. It was never really put in a wetland property back in the early 70s, when the state of Wisconsin mandated a law...
Do you have the legislation?
Um, I do have it, but I have a letter, if you look in your packet, I think it's through the back, where, um, uh, what's that guy's name? Allison at the DNR?
Allison, correct.
Yeah, Allison at the DNR, and Darren Schwanke, and I've had this delineated twice already. I've owned this property for 21 years, I had it delineated twice, and both times I had delineated, well in delineation line, did not move to this exact same spot.
And it's sewer packed in that or from in here?
Um, I had sewer pack, I had Army Corps of Engineers, and I had the DNR there. And somewhere in one of my old homes, I have a picture of all of them standing there.
Allison also stated that, um, there might be, uh, a new delineation needed? That was...
She says if you're trying to build something, if you're trying to build something in that wetland delineation zone...
No, in order to call it, to separate it, because what you're, I think, I might be wrong, but I think what you're trying to do is to have part of it remain C4, and then above that...
Correct. The few feet, right, the few feet that's depicted by that map.
Yeah.
It's gonna stay C4.
Yeah. Allison and Darren said that there are concerns about the delineation and the survey from 2012, and they would want to be, uh...
Do you have the actual letter that I got from Darren and from Allison? It's in the packet.
Yes.
Okay.
It says that they want these...
Well, he's quoting off his notes there, I don't know what exactly is said there, but he says that I can use my old delineation, because the lines hadn't changed, and I'm not doing anything in the wetland area.
I'll, I'll pull it up, what you gave us, and I'll...
That's probably right there at the back of that, back of there.
So, I, I, again, I think our, our concern is, I guess we, me, and I don't wanna speak for everyone, I'd be more apt to, if it is truly upland and it got zoned C4, okay, but I wanna see the, the wetland delineation, and then I want it a little bit more clearly. This is gonna be C4, and if three feet across the lake, I don't really care.
Right, if you, if you look at this area right here, that's in the, uh, I don't know what you're gonna call that dotted space or whatever, that's the wetland area right there, okay? That's clearly defined on the survey where it is. Nothing is gonna happen down on this area here, no, we're not building anything. And another thing I feel I've mentioned here is, there's gonna be no grading, there's gonna be no, um, variances needed, there's not gonna be any land disturbance. I'm just asking to park on gravel that I already have there, that I can't legally park on for commercial.
I get it, but I think you're jumping the route. I'm trying to help here.
Okay.
So if you wanna argue, we can argue.
No, I'm not arguing, Joel, I'm not arguing.
All, all I'm saying is, I think we wanna make sure that we're not changing wetland land to C2 land. We're not gonna do that, that's absolutely not gonna happen.
Okay, I...
We are reasonable people, that if it's upland and it's not wetland, it's not C4, that's, that's not properly...
Okay, I have eight or nine page full wetland delineation. This was put on the survey here, and Ferris Hanson, who's a licensed wind engineer, uh, guy for this, he did the, uh, the maps for me, and he put them on there.
And the data's still all here, too.
Correct, and nothing has changed.
The packet, you...
Says you. You know, and, and I'm not calling you high, I'm just saying, this is what I have to go off of, is 2013, there was this much C4.
Okay.
So, so if you had something that was 2024, that said, hey, the wetland delineation is this, I would be way more apt to, to, to hear you. Let's just do this.
Uh, right here, which was on April 28th, yeah. Okay, I contacted Darren, and I contacted Allison at the DNR, and I explained to them that I've had this property delineated twice, and nothing has changed in both delineations. I asked them, could I use the most recent wetland delineation survey map?
Which is the sensible one?
Right, that I have, would that suffice? And they asked me, do you plan on building anything, or doing anything in or near the wetland? I said, absolutely not. I said, I don't even plan on building anything.
So this...
For the record, the response was, the county would be looking for confirmation that the delineation survey from 2012 would still be accurate. The land above the delineation would, I think, would rezon to an upland, upland zone district, where the land below the delineation would remain in the C4 wetland. If these old delineations are confirmed, then Jan could start the rezon process with K Casey's, that company, then proceed to the township, and then add to the county zoning agency, but we don't give any further advice.
Okay, now, so...
So, so, so if these old delineations are confirmed, then Jan could start the rezon process with K Casey's, that company, then proceed to the township.
Okay, if you read the gray, can you read the top line right here? That answered that question right there.
I read the...
No, 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 wait, wait.
I'm trying to make a point.
Okay.
The, the advice...
Was to make sure...
The county zoning officer Darren Schwanke was to... The county zoning officer, Darren Schwanke, was to confirm the delineation, then proceed to the township.
And that's what happened. There was an email sent between Darren and Allison at the DNR and then Allison's response is up on the top here.
And Allison says a new delineation might be needed.
That's not what I'm reading here.
Well, that's where I get with the packet you gave us. It's a black and white.
I think it's uncommon for us to evaluate, uh, like a C four, C two rezone.
I don't know what the evaluation, but I'll let me do what I have here from my email that I got.
That's, that's what you gave us.
But let me read it. It says, the parcel does not have any map, uh, wetland except for what is being along the shore. So I would be comfortable calling the property upland as map in the two thousand twelve delineation. With a map wetland near the shore, if there are any future projects in that area, new delineation might be needed.
Stop, right there, right there. Stop right there. That, that, that's the answer. If there are any future projects in the area, a new delineation might be needed.
I'm not doing any process. I'm not building anything. I'm, I'm asking for a rezone along with a conditional use. There's no land disturbance. There's no buildings on it. There's no variance is being requested. I'm not doing anything. I'm just asking to be able to park on it legally, commercially.
Yes.
I can park on it now and personally use. Okay, well, the way it's explained here, if you read this, she's comfortable calling it two thousand twelve delineation as long as you're not doing anything in the area that's depicted on that site map as wetland. I'm not doing anything in that area there.
Yeah, and that's not how I agree with that.
So you, you're just saying you're not going to.
No, I'll, I'll get you a new.
I'm, I'm, I'm reading the room here and I feel like that's kind of the next step.
Joel, if you want the original wetland delineation from my most recent one, which was whatever it was, twelve or thirteen or fifteen, I'll get you the whole five or six or seven page report, which is going to depict what you see here. I have no problem with that.
But, but whoever did your delineation, can, can they confirm that it's still accurate or can someone? I mean, Allison said, maybe it is, maybe it isn't.
No, Allison said she feels comfortable using the wetland map delineation.
Keep going.
Yeah, with the map wetland near the shore, if there are any future projects in that area. I'm not doing anything in the male area.
Don't stop, keep going.
Okay. Uh, it says, if there are any future projects in that area, the map area, a new delineation might be needed, but for the purpose of zoning the entire parcel, the previous delineation is fine. So it's saying, you can go, you can go from C four to C two, but if you plan to do anything in the wetland area, you have to have pre-mat. I think that's how it's written. Maybe I'm wrong. If you'd like me to get the original six or seven page report from that, I'd be more than happy to get it for you. I have no problem.
I, I just think that's a big slipping point for this board. And again, I don't want to speak for anybody else.
We, we, we have a lot of requests to clean up zoning with wetlands because wetlands don't follow property.
Oh, I know.
So that, that's pretty common.
And you got to do it in formation during the growing season. I, I get it. I'm totally on board.
But what's uncommon here is we have a delineation survey done twelve years ago. That's not common.
Right, but when I contacted Darren and I contacted Allison, I asked them if I could use my old delineation so I don't have to do it for the third time, okay? And they said, as long as you're not doing anything in that wetland delineated area that's considered wetland, you're fine. So I'm not asking to do anything down along the edge of the shore. I'm not going to put anything there. I'm not going to build anything there. I'm not doing anything down there. All I'm asking is to get the property into an upland zoning district so the field conditions match what's on the book in the county. That's all I'm asking. But if you want me to get the six page or five page.
So I just want to say nothing's going to happen in that delineated C four area.
Correct.
I think we would all feel comfortable if we had a nice, pretty new map. And I'm not trying to spend your money, so don't kick your ass. That, that's dated two thousand twenty-four and said, here's the, I don't think that the wetland is just going to go from here to here. It's not. The water, the water didn't raise twenty-five feet. I get it. I get it. But, uh, uh, if someone told me if, if I'm not aligned with everybody else in the commission, that, you know, you're kind of bringing in, here's a little piece, here's a little piece. I'd like to see it all in one piece so we can say, you know what, we did approve it and it's, it's going to look like this now. But it's going to look like this, but maybe not.
Okay, I'm going to get you what you want because I'll be proper with my friends. I'm going to do it.
I'm not trying, I'm not trying to just cause trouble and spend money.
Joel, Joel, if that's the way you want, I'm more than happy to give you the exact what you want. No problem.
It's, it's cleaner for us.
That, that's fine, but what, what's happening here is depicted in what's been happening here for the last twenty years. Because I had delineated twice and nothing has changed over twenty years.
And if you feel that strongly about it, then you'd be delineating it one last time. Or, or maybe, or maybe.
Well, how about.
If Warren Hanson can say, you know, I talked to the DNR, my map is now updated, stamped.
Fair enough, fair enough. I'd be more than happy to do that for you.
I just, I, I, again, me personally, I would feel better if it's kind of all in one spot.
No problem.
And I'm not saying that that means we're going to approve it. I'm saying that makes us a lot easier.
I'll be happy to do what you want, Joel.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I have a question for you, as long as the board is here and I'm here. Um, does the board see a problem putting that size of a lot into, um, C two?
So my, I don't, and I don't want to speak for everybody. I don't, I'm not, it, it's not a conforming area.
Right.
So I don't necessarily feel that the size of the lot really, you know, changes. I mean, it's going to be non-conforming C two, which right now is not conforming C four.
Right.
So it's going to be non-conforming either way just because of the size of the parcel. And, and all your points about you should have more things on Dula, I get it, you know. I, I get it, but we're not, again, C four, C four, I, when I look down, I'm like, I'm not changing C four. I, I, I know the history, so, so again, I'm not saying that. But if, if you want this.
I'd be more than happy to show, to go up there, Warren up there. And I'll say, Warren, you contact somebody at Swirtpack or contact somebody at the DNR. Have them go over, uh, uh, records you have and give me an updated map showing that this is the delineation line.
Here, because all of this is great. This is really what I want because that's what's.
So I'll give you what you want. I'm not taking an argument. I'll give you what you want.
Great, so, uh, thank you. Any other questions for the advocate? Uh, good, if, if you don't mind.
And then I'll make sure I copy this.
I, I think at this point, and I don't want to, everybody in the audience, I think it's more of a, let's table this so we can get more information rather than get all the public input, then come back at our decision-making meeting and then have new information because we've had that issue.
We have to settle the rezoning before we can get to the conditional land.
I could not agree more. I almost, to me, they're two separate distinctions.
One, then the, um, and there is just some confusion.
I'll get that updated. No problem.
I, I think if we can get all the confusion and maybe even, Rich, you definitely got some, some notes, if, if we can get that to John, so maybe he can make sure he has a lot of questions. What Ferris Hansen does, okay, okay. Right, Ferris Hansen, because I don't want you to come back and go, oh, well, now we want this. I'm not trying to point names to.
So let me just ask you exactly what you want. You'd like me to go to Warren Hansen and you'd like him to contact Army Corps of Engineers.
So, so I'm not here to tell you what to do.
Well, I want to know what you want. I'm going to get you what you want.
I want to see a survey that's recent that shows the wet, the wetland delineation.
Correct, here.
In, in, in large or. Does anybody else disagree or want anything more or less?
Uh, in a legible format, I don't, I don't think. You, you didn't discuss current. I don't think we would have been in a position to act on this as is.
There's a full-size one right there that.
Right, but I'm, but I can't revisit. I can't prepare fully for the meaning.
So would you like me to get a size like that for you?
Well, eligible, so I think like this is.